Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting of the Glenorkie City Council on the twenty ninth of July two thousand and twenty four. The Glenorkie City Council acknowledges the Muunina people as the traditional owners of this land. We recognise that the Tasmanian Aboriginal people as the original owners and continuing custodians of the land, sky, country and waters of this island for Twitter. We pay our respects to Aboriginal elders, past and emerging. We commit to working in a way that welcomes and respects all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Island people. The meeting tonight will be recorded and livestreamed to members of the public via our council's website, Facebook and our YouTube channel. So, do we have any apologies for sitting? No, it's lovely to see a full house. Confirmation of the minutes of the open meeting, that minutes of the council meeting held on the twenty fourth of June two thousand and twenty four be confirmed. Can someone to move that please? Thank you, so that's alderman's slide and auditor. Give that to the vote, all in favour? All unanimously. Announcements by the chair, now I'll just give you a little warning, this is a little long, but there's quite a bit to be said. First of all, I'm going to discuss rates. By now, all property owners will have received their updated valuation of their property and their rates notices. Let me be clear, council has absolutely no say in the revaluation process, this is done by the valuer general. If you are not happy with your valuation, you have until this Friday, the second of August, to dispute that with the valuer general's office. Council does however, accept the rates each year. Due to the valuer general assessing property values, some people have seen their property value increase, which may mean their rates will be higher. However, many others have seen their property value decrease, lessening their rate bills. This year, we know that approximately sixty three percent, or two thirds of our rate payers, receive the base rate of five point nine five percent increase or lower. Thirty seven percent, or one third of rate payers, received more than the base rate of five point nine five increase because the value of their property increased. If you are fortunate enough to have had a significant increase in the capital value of your property, based on its location, you will be one of the thirty seven percent who are paying greater than five point nine five percent. And you may ask why you pay rates. Glenorkie is continuing to grow and as a growing community, council faces increased demand for infrastructure and services. Unfortunately, council have had to manage cost pressures to make sure the community has access to the infrastructure and services if rightly demands. In handing down its budget, council is always mindful of keeping rates as low as we possibly can. We understand people are struggling with the cost of living, but we also have an obligation to provide infrastructure and services to our community on a long term and sustainable basis. No one likes rate increases, but we need to be able to provide services to support our community and make Glenorkie a place where people want to live, work and visit. Ultimately, rates fund the infrastructure and services our community expects and relies on. It may also ask what my rates are spent on. Not only are we continuing to maintain our asset base worth over one billion dollars, we are also investing in our community, which is continuing to grow at a rate of five hundred new residents every year. Key projects this year will include twenty six point nine million in capital work, resurfacing more than seven kilometres of roads, replacing more than four kilometres of footpaths, black spot projects at Grove Road and Anfield Street, Main Road at Austons Ferry and Kensington Street school crossing, one point one million dollars on flood mitigation works, one million dollars for parks and reserves including the Clermont pump track, four hundred and fifty thousand for tracks and trails at Windermere Bay, and commencement of work to repair and reopen the Glenorkie Wall Memorial Pool. Now I come to the pool update, so this is about the repair and reopening of the pool. A plan to repair and reopen the pool has been prepared and is being used to design the project and prepare the documents for the tendering process. Our number one aim is to reopen a safe and accessible pool as soon as possible. Due to significant safety risks, the existing pool slide has to be removed. Advice received from the pool consultants is that it is a potential death trap. A similar slide caused the death of a young boy in New South Wales. We did look at the possibility of replacing the pool slide, but at a cost of one million dollars, we can't justify that sort of money when making the pool safe and accessible for all, which we consider as the most important. Unfortunately, we can't have it all, but if there is room in the budget for the toddler pool, we will upgrade it to be more user friendly and include some play features. The future of the pool. MI Global Partners have now completed the second phase of engagement with key stakeholders, looking at the options for the future of the pool, and they have delivered draft options assessment report, which we will now review. This report, which provides a summary of the analysis of the three shortlisted pool site options, will be made available on our website in the coming days. We will now select the preferred option to take through to the preparation of a final concept plan and business case. We anticipate that MI Global would deliver the concept plan and business case in early October. We will use the business case to lobby state and federal government for the money for the long term future of the pool. This process may seem to be taking a long time, but the business case is critical in demonstrating the viability and benefits of the new aquatic facility to our state and federal counterparts. Without it, no government is going to commit funds to this project. Now I want to address antisocial behaviour and city safety. Council is taking its approach to antisocial behaviour and city safety very seriously. We are currently deploying significant resources in an effort to keep young people who congregate in the CBD areas engaged. In conjunction with the Tasmanian police and with the support of other organisations such as Mission Australia and Neighbourhood Watch, we have been running street basketball games and several other activities on the council chambers forecourt every weekday afternoon to help mitigate issues during the after school period, and I hope you all noticed that the front ticket lawns are a much friendlier place to be. We are also lobbying government for assistance to join us in developing a coordinated approach to this issue. This week, a letter signed by all of the elected members will go to the premier, ministers of the relevant departments and the Liberal members of Clarke to highlight that we are experiencing what we are experiencing in Glenorkie and to implore them to work with us towards a solution for this ongoing problem. We will host a business breakfast on the twenty eighth of August to brief business owners and operators on their legal rights and obligations and how to keep themselves and their businesses safe and what council is doing to mitigate the problem, but we're trying to be very positive. We will then host a community yarn on the eleventh of September where expert advisors will educate community members on what to do and when they witness criminal or suspicious behaviour without exposing themselves to increased risk of direct harm. At each of these sessions, we'll invite businesses and community representatives to join us at a round table discussion with political and government officials to discuss and develop a coordinated strategy to address antisocial behaviour. I encourage everyone to participate in these sessions. Open workshop. After our successful first open workshop on the ninth of July, where over fifty people were in attendance either online or in person to listen to demographer Dr Lisa Denny talk about population change in Glenorkie and what it means for future planning, we will open our next open workshop to the public at four thirty on Monday the fifth of August. At this next workshop, council's manager of assets engineering and design, Patrick Marshall, will talk to us about how council has transformed the management of our assets, and I think you'll all find that particularly interesting. With over one billion dollars' worth of assets, the flow-on effects and the impacts of a functional asset management system is vitally important, and in fact, Patrick actually won an award for this work. I encourage everyone to join us at for this session at four thirty PM next Monday the fifth of August. Future workshops will cover topics such as child and youth safety framework, city safety, youth voice and housing and homelessness. And as usual, we're happy for any suggestions from the public. Now tackling graffiti, and I'm hoping we are going to have a couple of screens on view. We are taking a proactive approach to tackling graffiti through a new project to create artwork on traffic signal boxes throughout the Glenorkie CBD. I think what we're seeing here is just some of the infrastructure work, so there you go, you see that signal box with the yaoi on it, that was heard graffiti, and now it is a beautiful signal box, and we hope to be able to do more of those throughout the city. It's really quite stunning when you see it close up. So we're also hoping to expand this initiative by involving young people and community groups with the design of artwork for more signal boxes around Glenorkie. Deputy mayor election. Following the mayor elections, the office of deputy mayor became vacant. This afternoon, we will elect a new deputy mayor from around the table. We have four candidates and may I wish them all the very best of luck. We are also appointing members to the important audit panel, the General Managers Performance Review Committee and the Glenorkie Carols Grant Working Group. So hopefully that's all. Yes, thank you. Now we're going to move on to, make sure I put it right order here, response to previous public questions taken on notice, sorry, pardon, pecuniary interest notification, does anyone have a pecuniary interest in tonight's proceedings? No, thank you. Item five, response to public questions taken on notice, there are none, and now we have public question time. The council meeting, as most of you will know, is a formal meeting of the elected members elected by the Glenorkie community and is chaired by the mayor. Public questions time is an opportunity in the formal meeting for the public to ask questions of their elected council representatives about the matters that affect rate payers and citizens. In accordance with Regulation thirty one, two and three, Public Question Time, Local Government Meeting Procedures, Regulation two thousand and fifteen, council will allocate fifteen minutes during each council meeting to invite members of the public to ask questions relating to the activities of council. The following rules and procedures apply to public question time. Questions must relate to the activities of council. Members of the public are to announce their name and residential address before asking a question, which will be recorded in our minutes. Questions are to be put succinctly and in the form of a question and not a comment or with preamble. Questions are not to be inflammatory, abusive, defamatory, contain a personal attack or otherwise breach any rules of the meeting which have been explained by the chairperson. The chairperson may limit the number of questions asked by each member of the public in order to ensure that all members of the public wishing to ask questions given an opportunity within the allocated time. Chairperson will decide the order in which the questions are asked and may rotate the order between different members of the public if individuals have more than one question to ask. The chairperson may, in their absolute discretion, refuse to answer a question if the chairperson deems such as inappropriate or does not comply with these rules or the rules of the council meeting. Take a question on notice in which case the answer will be provided in writing prior to the next council meeting and included on the agenda for the next council meeting. If a question is taken on notice, the chairperson may request that the member of the public submit their question in writing and refuse to provide a response if the question is not provided as requested. Fifteen minutes allocated by the public question time may be extended to the discretion of the chairperson at the conclusion of the time period. Council is to publish information relating to public question time, including any additional rules and procedures on the council's website. And we did have some questions, there was one received on Sunday, the thirtieth of June by A Gordon, and that is involving security fencing, which was installed recently along the Barossa Creek path behind Constance Avenue, and it was put in place due to neighbours having deep concerns about children in the public drain and was considered a safety measure. The answers to the questions are in the agenda. We also received a question on notice by our friend Eddie Steenberger, interested in tenders, and that information is also published. Couple of questions on that, and actually there's four questions on that, which have all been answered, hopefully to your satisfaction. And another question on notice by Eddie, this one was on evidence and statistics to reassure him that any of the plastic he puts into his yellow bin is in fact being recycled or reused, and there is an answer to that there in the agenda. And also a question without notice from Miss Janice Bryan, two questions in fact, one is the cost of the safety modifications and upgrades Glenorkie Wall Memorial Pool water slide, I hope we've answered that, thank you, and if property revaluations are usually only every six years about the adjustment factors, have you got that answer too? Thank you, again, all in the agenda. Do we have any petitions or anyone wanting to address council meeting deputation?
Mine may be a deputation because it's a little bit longer than the question.
The deputations need to be sought in advance of the meeting.
All right, well I'll keep it as public.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm going, if I'm skipped over that, have I? I did too.
It's close.
Yes, very good. Do we have any questions from the floor? Thank you, Miss Bryan.
The assist annual value, the AAV, used to calculate Glenorkie City rates is the amount of estimated rental revenue to be received from the property, so it's based on that rather than the value of the property. Market increases in rents apply across all property areas, and therefore it appears there should not be large variations with disproportionate AAV value increases. Many rate payers have been severely affected. One property had an eighty eight percent AAV rental value increase from twenty eight thousand seven hundred to fifty four thousand, being one hundred and forty two dollars per year increase in rates, while another property in the same area had a twenty three percent AAV rental value increase, being seventy four dollars per year. There has been unexplainable and excessive rate increases on certain properties across the municipality. These large increases have been sudden, and in addition to the adjustment factors which are meant to level that out, that have been applied to valuations every two years to even out market trends and ensure fluctuations such as this do not occur when the fresh six-year evaluation is done. Also, it appears inconsistent land value increases require auditing due to zoning and other infrastructure and environmental constraints that limit the density, location or form of development of the land use that has not been taken into account when they previously were. These restrictions include an example, examples such as landslide areas, flood prone land, electricity towers on land or land that does not have access for development, so there's no access, so the land cannot be developed. Land value increases should not affect the AAV rental value for a property, but appear to have been unexplainably and inconsistently taken into account for certain properties. Has the council requested an audit of the valuation data to verify the methodology used and accuracy of the AAV rental value calculations used for rate notices in the interests of those rate payers affected by these huge variations, including pensioners, when no improvements have been made to their property since the last valuation? They should have, they should not have occurred in the AAV property rental value in comparison to everyone else in the municipality, so.
Right, that's a very complex question, and before I pass it over to the general manager, I think this is a matter for the valuer general and not for the council, and I think it's important to recognise in the last six years, properties that were selling for two eighty five, two hundred and eighty five thousand are now selling for five ninety and that type of thing, so there's been significant increase in most people's assets.
Yes.
Can I just ask those two, ask you to name those two amounts it went up by, was it a hundred and forty five and seventy two dollars a year?
One thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars, and the other one was seventy four dollars a year, such a large variation, it appears there's something not quite right with the methodology that's been used, and what I'm basically saying, could the council inquire with the officer, the valuer general, why there is such variations when the AAV is based on rental value of a property? And also, you've had the adjustment factors applied in the six-year period, that's meant to even out rate increases, so you don't get this big fluctuation, and you'll find that in their literature.
Yes, we know that, thank you. General manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Mayor is correct, it's the valuer general that sets the valuations for each municipal area, and so when people receive their valuation notices from the valuer general, it would have had details on the notice about where they need to go and what process they need to go through to challenge the evaluation before the valuer general. It's important to note that that, we understand that that period is up on the second of August, so it's important, which is Friday, so it's important that people have concerns about the extent of their revaluation, including their AAV, that they take the opportunity to apply for a review by the valuer general.
I understand that, but when it's sort of like, obvious there's something not quite right, I'm just wondering whether the council have some responsibility just to inquire. I understand the officer that did the valuations is on leave at the moment, so I haven't quite.
I think we issued something like twenty two thousand rate notices, so we're probably So we're probably not necessarily going to notice that discrepancy without referring to the previous.
I know. You would probably trust the information you've received. But if you sorted the file, you could probably see this number.
And that's why I think there's a facility for the individual to go to the Valuer General and challenge it. And we're certainly happy to have a one-on-one conversation with anyone affected. But it will be subject to them challenging their valuation.
So if there was a major problem with it, would everyone then be reviewed? Because there's some elderly, some elderly people are having trouble with the process of putting in valuation objection.
I think you'd have a hard time arguing seventy-four dollars. But you would definitely be, get a conversation on one thousand and over the other minute one if you were to apply. But I think we'll have to bring that to a close because we don't have any power over the Valuer General.
That's all right. Just raising it to people aware.
Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to ask a question?
Uh, yeah.
Could I just have your name, please?
Elvin Robinson.
Elvin Robinson?
Kevin.
Kevin Robinson, sorry.
Yeah, I've got a problem with one of my ears. It's a little bit hard to hear.
Okay.
Basically, uh, I'm one of the people with the objection to the rates. And the AAV, actually Jan invited one there, but it's actually mine. I live in twenty-one Jacinda Drive, Montrose. I've got one point six three acres up there, which is a very steep hill. And it, from my house, it comes down to Upper Montrose Road. But yeah, it's my house. Twenty-eight thousand seven hundred was the AAV. Now it's fifty-four. The evaluation on the house of one million three hundred and fifty last year was nine hundred and ninety. Yeah, I'm a pensioner, part pensioner. And it took approximately seventy, seventy-three dollars. Let me get it right. I think it's seventy, just a minute. I've got it. Yeah, anyhow, it's gone up to one hundred and eleven a fortnight to one eighty-eight. So it's over seventy odd dollars a fortnight. Now, if you, if you look at my house, and I did a government, and I put an objection in and I was spoken to the people in the valuation department. If you look at my house, the high range is nine seventy. That's real estate dot com. In July, June twenty-four. It probably was a little bit more than that. I understand that. But nine seventy, or valuation from the valuation department, it's one three fifty. And the rental aspect dollar, it worked out to, uh, high range is seven thirty a week. And, uh, and a confident high range is six sixty-five a week. But look, it's, it's definitely not a thousand thirty-eight a week. And that's what how you people, how the AAV is determined at fifty-four thousand. I wouldn't get that rental. So I've appealed it. Now, with the one point six acres I've got, it's very, very steep. You can't do any movement. You can't develop it. You're no developer of that subdivision back when it was developed. It's, there's no access from Upper Montrose Road to the land. There's no access from Pittyard Street with the land. There's no access from Jacinda Drive where there's three properties that back onto my land. There's only my driveway. So you can't develop. The other thing is, if you go back to the lawyer's documentation with the water house, part of that hill is, is a potential slip, landslide. Yeah, all these things come into consideration. Now, when I rang the people in the valuation department, I was told that the chap had paid us going on all those remotes. And they come back to me in September. That's, that's where I'm at. But yeah, so my rates went up fourteen hundred and, I haven't got the exact figure, fourteen seventy-two. This in twelve months, for twelve months. That's a lot of money. And I'm a, I'm a part pensioner. Uh, fourteen hundred dollars for fourteen hundred and seventy-two dollars, I think it worked out to, per year on top of my normal rates. So they went from, uh, admittedly, I get a little discount, but, uh, it went from two thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars to four thousand two hundred and forty-nine. Yeah, it's pretty hard to justify.
Right. So unfortunately, you have been to the Valuer General and you've been asked to come back.
I've posted a bill.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've done that. But I just wanted to come in and say, well, this is the scenario. Now, not, it wouldn't be too anything with my situation probably, but, uh, yeah, we talk about percentages of it going up and so on. Mine's like eighty-eight percent.
Yeah. And, and we hear you because we do know that just because someone's had an increase in value doesn't mean there any more money to pay for the rates. But, um, I'm going to pass it over to the General Manager.
Yeah.
Because we do have ways to try and help you. But I've got to say that we are reliant on the Valuer General. So I'd be surprised if we didn't listen to you.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, that's, that's right. We, so we've got, as a council, we're obligated to use a valuation that's provided by the Valuer General, whether it be, in, in, most councils use the AAV and this council uses AAV. And we're required to use that in setting our rates. It's interesting, actually, that we, what we do is we multiply your AAV by cents, a cent in the dollar amount to get the actual amount of your rates. We've actually put that down from seven point something cents down to six point something cents in this twenty-four, twenty-five years. So the, the actual rate in the dollar has actually gone down. The issue is that the, the, because of the fact that property market's been booming for so long, you know, there's been a significant increase in people's values over the last period of time. And the way the act works, it assumes that, it's actually explicitly stated in the act, it assumes that, uh, the government assumes that there's, there's an increasing capacity to pay for a higher value. And we understand, as the mayor said, we understand.
Yeah.
You know, you, you know, you, you work hard and, you work hard and, and, and you, you know, build up your property and it's worth a fair value and then you, then you retire and you don't necessarily always have the, you know, have the, the, the amount of money to, to deal with those increases. So we do actually have a hardship policy at council. It is possible for people that are doing it tough to, to make application to council for, to, to, you know, to make arrangements in relation to their rate obligations. So that, that is a possibility for you. But unfortunately, our hands are tied in terms of the Valuer General. You know, that, we, we're required to rely on the value that they give us. And we, and we also understand and council very much understands that this happens every, every time there's a municipal reevaluation, that some, that values go up and down all over the city. And we've had, we've actually had quite a lot of people's, I think, off the top of my head, about thirty-four percent. I think of people's rates, rates actually went down this time, right? In terms of, in terms of below the five point nine five percent rate increase that council, the general rate increase overall. So we've got an average of five point nine five. Those, some properties received a lesser increase because their value was lesser than average. Others, like yourself, obviously, received a greater increase because your value increase was greater than average. So it's, it's, it's hard to explain. It's, it's, we would, we'd obviously prefer a, a situation where, as Miss Bryan said about the, the valuation factors, they tend to be fair to everyone because the same increase applies to everyone in between the revaluations. But the, the fact is that every time we have these municipal revaluations, they affect people in different ways across the municipality. And our usual kind of flat percentage rate approach plays out differently across the municipality and affects some people more than others.
Considerably more, in my case. When I asked the valuation people, I said, obviously, you, you've got to arrive at a certain figure for the councils. And you people go on what they say. I said, what do you do? Google map them? It would say much. But obviously, that's how we do, do a Google map. As I said, I've got no access to the land up into my driveway. And there's a bit of a fire trail. And if the fire trucks need to get in there, they, they need to come through my front yard. It just seems incredible they could be that land when it's completely useless, and I mean completely useless. Maybe I've got to go a couple of trees down and to pay the rates. I don't know. I'll get someone to do it because, you know, it's, and I'm sure you wouldn't like that with a, with a slipper out. But the bottom line is, it's, it's no good for anything. Other than fact, I've got a bush setting below it and I look review. It's, and I can appreciate what you're saying about the Valuer General. Hopefully, they see where I'm at with the, because mine's fairly unique. As in no access whatsoever. It's just a bit of wood. So anyhow, I wanted to make you aware of it.
Yeah.
I'm one of those people with a high interest. That's, that's all I'm saying.
And we understand and sympathise.
And we'll see what happens.
Yeah, thank you for joining us.
Yes, September. Thanks very much.
And actually, we would like to know the answer to that. We would like to know how you got on.
I will certainly do that.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
May I do extend question time?
Yes, may I extend question time? Do we have any other? Yes, Miss Crewe.
Excuse me. Marla Crewe, Nathan Claves. We were talking about crime in the CBD. And in my role as the community advocate, I've been consulted by numerous people. And I've had the mayor look at a draft petition which I've changed. That petition is now with Ella Hadad waiting to be tabled, wherein a call for government, called on the government to, to subsidize cameras in the CBD, linked to the police, run by council, of course, if you could. And a booth and busman to be manned by police during peak hours. These kids that are going to, sorry, not going to school, but generally it's coming back from school when they have the problems. And, and workers who commute and use the buses. Would council support something like that?
Uh, yes, something like that. The thing is, Miss Crewe, we have already sent a letter largely to that effect, except, I think I'm correct in saying there's something like eighty-three cameras operating between Glanorki and Luna already. And that we are talking to the police in live streaming it to the police. Obviously, they won't be watching it in real time, but it'll make it easier for them to access anything quickly without us having to pull someone out after hours to get the footage. So if they agree to that, that would be a great outcome. We are very conscious of this, not only for the potential lifelong risk to the offending youths. And they're not all youths, but predominantly, I think they are. Uh, we also are very conscious of the reputation of Glanorki, that we want everyone to feel safe and included. We don't want the businesses not being able to open their doors because of dramas going on. They tend to happen in Little Peaks. They are a very small group that are causing a fair bit of destruction. We are working with the police. We're having regular meetings with the police. We, we do all of the ultimate as well. And we have internal meetings as well with the various agencies around this issue. We take it extremely seriously. We're employing guards for the front lawns. We've asked the police to have a more visible presence. We've asked the premier through our letter to allow for more police with a visible presence. I like your idea of having the booths much like they have in Hobart, but whether that comes up is another thing. So I can assure you that we're doing everything in our power as much to save these children from themselves and dismal futures and generational damage as it is for anyone witnessing this sort of behaviour.
I think this would, would actually tie in with my petition that was already tabled. And it comes up, I think, it's, at the moment, it's on the parliamentary website and can actually be signed there. And that calls for changes to legislation. And that was very well received by everyone in parliament. So hopefully, we can make a difference. But the new petition, actually, the current petition, calls for cameras to go from Luna all the way up to Clermont. And Clermont of recent has seemed to be, seems to be the hotspot for very, very angry young people. And like you say, they need to be saved.
From themselves.
From themselves.
Yes. Well, thank you, Miss Crewe. I'll have to investigate Clermont. Not certain that we've covered that yet, but we might be able to apply for grants to get some cameras. So thank you very much for your contribution and good luck with your petition. Uh, Eddie, Mr. Steenburgen.
My name is Eddie Steenburgen. I live in Murshoe Road, Rosetta. And I have just two quick questions. One relates to McGill Rise, problematic situation. It's been problematic for many years and I'd like to know what the current situation is with McGill Rise.
Yes, it's not a very attractive place at the moment. I have been up there to visit and there's been a lot of destruction to the vacated homes. General Manager, would you like to give the legal answer?
So a little while ago, we were concerned that the, the fact that the houses are being damaged and that the, that vandals or thieves have, have interfered with the downpipes. We were concerned at the potential for, in a big rain event, for stormwater to just run into the, the building platform and the, you know, the, the fill underneath the building and, and create some problems. So, so we served an abatement notice on the property owners. And the property owners have, have challenged that, that abatement notice before the courts. We, we actually went in and did the work, so to reinstate the downpipes with the agreement of the owners. So they're disputing the, the need for an abatement notice, but we were, we, our first priority was to rectify the potential for stormwater infiltration into these building platforms. That, that process is still before the courts. I understand there's a mediation arranged for the fifth of August.
Can I answer your question?
It does. Thank you. One second question. Relates to a property in Austens Ferry, two sixty-one Main Road, which is, seems to be the largest piece of land owned by council that's doing nothing. And I gather there was some remediation planned really this year. And I'd like to know what the current state of play is with that land.
Three, may I ask that one on to the director?
Thank you, Mayor. Two sixty-one Main Road, where it's in Austens Ferry, is actually part of a redevelopment process. We, we removed some contaminated soil. We've had a contamination report done on that whole site. So that, some contaminated soil was removed. The, there was a fuel tank in that area that has been removed. And we're waiting on a heritage assessment to be completed. And then we're looking to possibly rezone that site. So we can't progress more of the strategic rezoning until we've got all the information back. So contamination is dealt with, waiting on the heritage assessment report to come back so we can actually progress.
And that's the only hurdle left?
At this stage, yes. So obviously, we have to do a, a plan of how we'd like to see it rezoned. It's most likely going to be in three different zones, light industrial, some open space and some residential. Because there's a protected, protected stand of tree species on that site that can't be removed. So that's why there'll be some open space. There's a light industrial zone, generated by two on one park. So that'll probably be zoned or recommended to be zoned by industrial and the balance will be residential. But that will have to go through the commission and be approved by. But that will have to go through the commission and be approved by that.
Oh, yes, yes.
But it is progressing.
So what sort of time to go? Are we looking at our heritage assessments?
There's probably still twelve months away before that's going to be completed.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the floor? No. Okay, just had something. Yes, I'm just going to say this for the benefit of people who are interested in the pool repair. I should have mentioned it earlier. The scope of works to repair and reopen the pool includes an upgrade to the entry area, change rooms and toilet facilities. A new environmental protective chemical delivery fund. Who's that? Fund? Right, B U N D. A concrete repair of the grandstand plant room and around the pool, installation of new pool expansion joints, repair and upgrade the pool drains and plan for repainting the pool, installation of a new separated filtration system for the toddler pool. And funding is also expected to cover a new pool heating system, which is the best news. New switchboard and an all-ability accessible ramp entry to the main pool. Now, no other questions. We move on to item seven petitions or addressing the council meeting. None, thank you. And now activities of the mayor. So has someone moved? Sorry. Oh, yeah, too. Can I seek a motion to reorder the agenda to move items twelve and thirteen to be for item eight so that all voting processes are carried out efficiently? Thank you. So we've got it moved by Alderman Cocksher, seconded by councillor King. Oh, quick, big button. And put that to the vote. All those in favour, it's carried unanimously. So. Item twelve. So it's my pleasure to address the candidates. Alderman Jan Dunsey, Alderman Stephen King, Alderman Stuart Slade and Alderman Russell Yaxley. So we've got that motion to, now I seek a motion to suspend the operation of Regulation twenty-two of the Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulation two thousand and fifteen to enable the holding of a ballot to elect the deputy mayor. So can I have a mover for that motion, please? Thank you, councillor Quick. And thank you, Alderman Alderton. All those in favour? Yes, carried unanimously. So I'm going to pass it over to you, General Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll invite the coordinator to come forward and arrange for the connotation of the ballot.
All right, and I have to ask each alderman to, or candidate, sorry, to have an opportunity to speak. I hope you're all prepared for that. It says here it is a great privilege to be elected by the Glanorkey community to be an elected member and a further honour to be elected by your peers to take on the role of deputy mayor. And I'm looking forward to working closely and collaboratively with elected members fortunate to be elected deputy mayor and good luck to all candidates. I call on Alderman Russell Yaxley to speak first, then we'll go to Alderman Jan Dunsey, Alderman Stephen King and Alderman Stuart Slade. And the general manager will be managing the ballot. So if you'd like to go first, Alderman Yaxley, feel free to stand if you'd like.
The role of deputy mayor is an important one. It requires a blend of dedication, time, flexibility and the ability to represent both the council and the community with integrity, commitment at a wide range of events and enables councils to operate seamlessly, reliably and efficiently. As deputy mayor, I see that you must be an active listener. You must provide constructive feedback to the mayor, support and assist whenever called upon and help elected members to work together for the best interests of the council and in turn our community. I've been encouraged by many others in the community and many of you around the table to put my hand up for the role of deputy mayor. This wasn't an automatic decision for me. It hasn't been a straightforward decision. But deciding to put my hand up for the role of deputy mayor for me is the right decision. It's the right decision to ensure that all around the table are heard and continue to work together. That all around the table are engaged and to see our council stronger for the remainder of our term. And that our term is successful and not wasted. It's the right decision as I have a deep passion for seeing that people in our community thrive. I'm passionate to improve the wellbeing and foster pride in our city, earning trust from our community and driving progress based on good governance, not just good governance, but excellent governance. It's the right decision because I have a passion and a firm understanding of our annual plan and strategic direction and dedicated to ensure our budget is delivered. From the very beginning of our term, I've consistently and frequently represented us all from a one-on-one chat to people in the community to community events, and this demonstrates my dedication and desire to serve our community. It's the right decision as I've volunteered for numerous council committees, including the planning authority, community awards, Christmas carols, and I've stepped up to such roles as the proxy for the order panel when no one else was wanting to do that role. Just last week, I nominated for the order panel position and the general manager's performance review because I want to continue to contribute and do all I possibly can to give the best of me to see our community flourish. And that's my, will show my commitment and desire that I'm willing to go above and beyond the call. It's the right decision as I've built relationships with each of you around the table. Even we have certainly disagreed at certain times. I feel like I have remained respectful, considerate and sought understanding in our discussions and I've always had the best interest of our community and council front of mind. I'm fully equipped to fulfil the role of deputy mayor and I'm committed to assisting the mayor to meet regularly and to assist elected members to ensure our city continues on the positive and progressive path. So I seek your vote for deputy mayor and I thank you for your support and together let's continue to move our community forth.
Thank you. Alderman Dunsey.
Thank you, Mayor. I too consider it honoured to be able to put forward my nomination for the role of deputy mayor. During my three terms on council, I've gained experience in many aspects of the various committee structures which provide me with a great overview of the council operations. My time on council has provided very different experiences. My first term was finding out the deficiencies that we had in this council and eventually seeing it through to being under a void of inquiry. Term two was a rebuild. We had to respond to ministerial directions and these clearly have set us up to be a very strong council from a governance perspective. Now that I'm in my third term on council, I see the rebuilding coming through and so great outcomes are showing for our city. We've got low debt levels, the predicted positive budget and many projects are now starting to come to fruition. However, my heart is clearly set within community. I have no career ambitions outside of my commitment to local government and in particular Glanorkey City Council. However, outside of my community role, I do volunteer within my community. I'm across the justice, education, disability and health sectors and also a member of a lobby group. That provides me with extra skills, insights and abilities that I can apply to my role at council and will bring to the potential role of deputy mayor. As my primary role currently is being an alderman at council, I have the flexibility to be able to step up at short notice and would apply my work ethic as required should the mayor ever not be available at any time. For me, it would be a privilege and an honour to serve my community as deputy mayor. However, the vote sits with the nine other people sitting around the table tonight. So I dutifully ask them to consider me as their preferred candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Alderman Stephen King.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this is a time of self-assessment. I don't like saying hi, but, you know, I was really not in team, but here we are as a team. But we've got to talk about I for the moment, so here we go. What do I bring to council? What do I bring to the role as deputy mayor? I've done it before, as most of you know, and Dean, so I'm told, have done a reasonable job and I was grateful for that opportunity. I bring experience, been here since two thousand and eight. Some might say it's good or bad, but nevertheless, here we are. Hopefully I bring a sense of humour as well. Qualifications wise, I suppose, I started life as an electrician. I think I even worked with Kevin at Medhurst many years ago. Happy to see him, happy to see him. Followed on from that, had businesses in Glanorkey for the last thirty-seven plus years. Very committed to Glanorkey. I hold a diploma of management, a certificate for a credit management, an Australian credit licence. I represent the consumer leasing industry regularly, travelling to Canberra to negotiate with federal politicians, working with ASIC, Afka, CentrePay, Treasury, and so I've had a lot of experience with negotiating at high level. Also had experience negotiating with the state government. As many of you know, I negotiated two point two million dollars for the Munro and Clarence Sports Centre as president of NF SRA to keep those sports centres open. I worked, I think, fairly well, as I said before, with Mayor Thomas, would meet with her regularly and the one time I did fill in for her, I had to get Alderman Dunsey to finish the meeting because I lost my voice right at the end of the meeting. And there is some humour in council at times. And so anyway, I bring what I've got. What you see is what you get and hopefully that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alderman Stuart Slade.
Thanks, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, fellow elected members, council manager and staff and gallery attendees today. I'm standing for the position of deputy mayor following former deputy mayor, who he being elected as our city council mayor. I have acquired extensive experience, knowledge and skills in local government at the Glanorkey City Council since nineteen ninety-one, except for a five-year absence from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-two. I was elected for a free year term as mayor from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fourteen and deputy mayor at four consecutive elections from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and five. All these elections were general elections, not elections around the table like the one we'll be having this afternoon. I've completed elective member courses at the University of Canberra, a company directors' course through AICD at the University of New England. I've also acquired a graduate certificate in risk management and a graduate diploma in health science at the Queensland University of Technology. I think it's important in both roles to understand, in this case here, deputy mayor as well, the functions of mayor and deputy mayor in accordance with section twenty-seven of the Local Government Act. First one, of course, is to act as the leader of the community and the municipal area. Well, I can tick that one off because I've done that as mayor and of course I've done that closely as a acting mayor on a number of occasions. These to carry out the civic ceremonial functions of the mayor and mayor office closely. During that period, I've understood what the fundamental step was and how important it was and what a great honour to do it as well. And I've carried that out too. The other one was to make good governance by and within the council. And I think with my background and other things that I've been involved in, whether it be the RACT as president or other organisations, I certainly have a good governance background and also demonstrate that to a year within the council. Also to act as chairperson of the council and a chairman to the council and man that supports decision-making processes. We're all around the table here. I've had a great assistance in that and I've shared, but I have certainly done thousands of meetings in relation to different aspects of council and different aspects of the commercial world on different subjects. To act as spokesperson for the council, a very important job, which the mayor does and then it's delegated down to the deputy mayor through their authority and I've done that on a number of occasions without any issues. To represent the council and regional organisations and the intergovernmental forums at regional state and federal levels, I've done that as well. Just have our, sometimes my council association when it was going, our local government association, our other intergovernmental agencies like Tas Water, state and federal levels of organisations. I've represented seven thousand, sorry, I've represented seven billion members around Australia in relation to the drivers level at the Audible Club, Triple A in around Australia. To lead and participate in the appointment and monitoring of the forms of the general manager, that's something that I've had the opportunity to do in as mayor and deputy mayor. Very important role. It's the only role that we do as a mayor, as part of that committee, is the council's to judge the performance of the general manager and to point he or she to how they're going. I clearly understand those roles. I hope I've spelt them out. I just want to highlight some of the things I've done while I was deputy mayor. Please just bear with me. But certainly in the late nineties, I had a firm vision and commitment about cycleways. I was certainly instrumental in having the council look in that direction. Excuse me, and they set annual budget mounts that saw the intercity cycleway. They've gone up beside now going out to from Munro to Clermont. And I certainly advocated that and there will be always be a strong legacy of mine. As deputy mayor, chairing many meetings with various stakeholders, I saw this vision become reality and now join a lot of people from transport users to social usage and also people walking along there. I was chair of cycling south for ten consecutive years, which engaged all other councils in southern Tasmania. Again, in a meeting scenario, but with a common goal to build up those linkages. I was inaugural chairman of Abbey Field House in Tigrel, chair of Abbey Field Tasmania and director of Abbey Field Australia. Again, supporting the opportunity of having supportive housing and having choices within Glanorkey. I was instrumental in saving the YMCA through negotiation and rescue package in the late nineties with state government, which I was deputy mayor at the time, Glanorkey City Council, that was a bit of a balancing act, and of course the launch of YMCA. Having a strong passion for community safety during the period was something which I also had a balancing act, but it came natural to me. I was at that stage a sergeant in charge of state crime prevention with Tasman Police, as I said, in that role. And at the same time, I was deputy mayor. My chairman's mayor, as mayor included, chairing near the committee, excuse me, that handled the design and construction of the Munro Arts Centre. Following up that marvellous grant we got through Andrew Wilkie, independent of a clerk, pursuing the development of Bunnings Warehouse and starting to see the growth coming out of Eknock Development here into Glanorkey. One which we take for granted, there were some, people had some different ideas on it. But supporting council's elected members, documentation going digital. I say supporting because some of us tend really want to go that way, but it's the way you do go and it's worked out well. Chair of the committee which dissolved in the development of Glanorkey City Council's first community plan. That was something that I really, really cherished, that the plan that we referred to for many more years. I was at the grassroots that from day one and was seeing what that goes through now and to our other plans, whether it be our action plans and general strategic plans. I've represented the council at many citizenship ceremonies and people have done that. What an honour, what an honour. They have phenomenal acts to perform and I've done that as a mayor. I was the inaugural director of destination southern Tasmania, nominated by Southern Tasman Council Association because of my position at that stage as president of the RACT and also chair of the RACT travel company. I also chaired the hundred and fifty anniversary of the Glanorkey municipality and fifth anniversary of Glanorkey being a city. We've got the sixtieth one came up this year, but the hundred and fiftieth was a big one and so was celebrating the city. And we had numerous, was very inclusive of everybody in the city during that period. Stirring the gas, which I was very committed to, project into its opening stage, stage two. Obtaining funding for the reverse erection of surveillance cameras. I might tell you, it took sixteen years in surveillance cameras in the city. Sixteen years I advocated, which is on record. We finally got them, common sense has come in and then the rest is history, but it's great that we got them. And I'm able to liaise with other stakeholders through that period at short notice, as of course I was involved in other organisations. In summary, to my colleagues around the table, I believe I've shown how many years my local government and commercial experience, knowledge and skills which assist me and the full council, especially the mayor, to carry out the duties of a deputy mayor. I believe it's best practice for local communities when a deputy mayor lives in the city like I do and I can guarantee a commitment of being able to address issues, including representing the mayor at short notice every day of the week, including the weekends with great community passion. I seek support from my colleagues around the table for the election of deputy mayor. Thank you for your time.
Well, I have to say, ladies and gentlemen, that you can see that we have high calibre of talent for this ballot. All of these members I can account or attest to are genuinely committed to this city and its good governance. So we're now calling the, I'm going to call on the general manager to run this ballot.
Thank you, Mayor. You now or should have a ballot paper before you. Can I just remind you of the requirement in the regulations that in voting, what you have to do is, it's not tick a box, it's you need to cross out the names of everyone you're not voting for. of everyone you're not voting for, leaving the name of the person you are voting for. And that's important, that's important to ensure you're casting a ballot vote. Probably a lenient one, Josh, it's probably a conflict of interest.
Now, we've had no scrutiny as nominated, so Mel and myself are going to go into the committee room and count the votes and we'll be back in a minute.
We move on to the next item or are we just going to wait for the suspense?
So from what I understand, we must have a tie for the equal lowest vote. So what we now have to do under the regulations is to cast lots for the member to be eliminated, or candidate to be eliminated, sorry. So there'll be two, each of the two equal lowest voting candidates, sorry.
We have three lowest and one not lowest.
Yep. So the three equal ranked lowest votes will all go into the blue balls. We then, what we then do is we need to then shake the container. Everyone has an opportunity, everyone present has an opportunity to shake the container. And then the first blue ball to be drawn is a candidate that is eliminated.
So where do we get the blue bucket from? That's the thing.
I know. And then matches the balls, that's why it's been chosen, not because of a three ball. And General Manager, that is because the requirement is to have a simple majority, so far.
That's correct. So, well, there's a requirement for the Deputy Mayor to be elected, they must achieve a simple majority, which is a minimum of six votes around the table.
So the first, the ball which comes out first.
Is eliminated.
Is eliminated.
Is eliminated. It's the decider.
Because it's the three equal lowest ranking candidates.
Because they're all scored equally lowest.
This is just a lot of luck.
Yeah. Glanorkey's foul ball, don't buy tickets.
So a question, do we announce the three lowest candidates? Do you or?
Yes. Actually, yes, I say.
There's no requirement in the act to do that, so what we're required to do is to announce that the first drawn.
So we have three candidates in the bucket.
Oh, someone wants to shake the bucket. Just shake it, anyone. Get your Easter stoggi. Any went from left to right, you went from right to left. Now, what won? Who came up with these rules? That's what I know.
Someone in nineteen.
Josh, it's been here for a long time, mate.
So General Manager, we're now going to withdraw one of the.
Not your either finger, you should write here, not your left hand.
The candidate eliminated is Alderman Dunstby.
Alright, so we go and create new ballot papers and we'll go to another.
The councillors will create a new ballot paper with the remaining three candidates on it. And then there'll be another vote. And again, the same process is that we're seeking to achieve a simple majority of six votes around the table for one candidate. And the lowest scoring candidate, if there are no deadlocks, lowest scoring candidate is eliminated.
This is according to the Local Government.
This is the Local Government General Regulations.
1837.
2015 actually. I think because the spheres are equal sized, they're not like you're scrunching different sized things up. There's no question that they're just the same.
It's nerve wracking and I'm not even being.
Like it's part of your TV show.
So the rocks, Channel 7, must I?
Wouldn't it be, is this the same shape? Wouldn't it be unique if every round ended up being decided by that ball? That never happened, every round?
No.
I think in this digital age, we'd have electronic voting. They do in Scotland Parliament.
I reckon we should have a little touch page.
Or that worm.
You do with game shows, I don't.
No deal. And it's very, it's very tightly prescribed in the act.
We appreciate that. It doesn't happen very often. Just often enough for us to remember.
The next open meeting, we'll be discussing how we manage our asset management plan and that's sort of how we work out the life of some of our assets, how much money we're going to devote to keeping them to a certain standard. But getting on with it.
On the second ballot, the lowest candidate has been eliminated, so there was no deadlock. And that's Alderman Stewart Slade. And there's no simple majority, so there's another ballot. Alderman Yaxley has been elected as to the office of Deputy Mayor for the Balance of the Council.
So congratulations, Alderman Yaxley. So we now have a recommendation that Alderman Yaxley's election as Deputy Mayor for the Balance of the Council term in accordance with section 44.4 of the Local Government Act 1993 be moved by. Thank you, Alderman Slade. Senator, thank you very much, Alderman King. I put that to vote. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Congratulations. Do you have the chair shuffled now or?
I'll do it next time, surely.
Okay. You happy with that, Alderman?
I just asked, congratulations to you, Alderman Yaxley. I just want to leave council. My father's very ill at present moment and I've got to go to hospital. But I wanted to stay with the democratic process, so thanks for having me.
So now I'm seeking a motion to reinstate the operation of Regulation 20.2 of the Local Government Meeting Procedures, Regulation 2005. And I have a move reined Alderman Rockshott and seconded by Alderman Oldt. Any discussion? No? I put the motion, all those in favour, raise your hand. It's carried unanimously. We're now going to move to item 13, the appointment of elected members to the vacant committee positions. And I call for a nomination for a proxy member of the audit committee. Alderman Yaxley will be appointed to the vacant audit panel position. Alderman Yaxley was previously a proxy member. As there was now, as there was only one nomination for the position, I'm calling for another elected member to nominate themselves for the now vacant proxy position.
It's two proxy positions.
Yeah, two proxies. So Alderman Jan Dunstby is one of our proxies and we need another one.
Can I ask, Mayor, how much time is involved in the audit?
It's about two to three hours of Friday every two months on a morning.
Four or five audit panel meetings, five audit panel meetings a year. And you receive the papers, similar to a council meeting, you receive the papers in advance of the meeting. And yeah, the audit panel meetings generally last two to three hours.
Okay. And as a proxy, I could probably find the time to be involved.
Very much appreciated. Thank you, Alderman Oldt. So that's noted. Now, we're moving on to 21. There were more nominations received than positions vacant on the General Manager's Performance Review Committee and a ballot is required. So we're handing over to the General Manager to manage the ballot process.
I'll ask our coordinator to assist in this process. No, Blue O Spikes, Hakespears required.
I know, they're retired for the evening. It's important that this is a circle who you'd like to vote for, not a cross house.
Getting tricky now, aren't we?
There's a small typo on the next one as well, in the minute, in the agenda.
It's got Glanorkey Carol's Grants Working Group nominees Alderton Shane, Justin Stringer. Should be Alderman. It's just where it's got the nominees. It should be Alderman Justin Stringer, not Alderton.
So just to be clear, we have, we're voting on the three positions. So one is to the Christmas Carols, which is, because we only had the one person, that's Alderman Justin Stringer, thank you very much. And the other one was the performance review.
Joining the votes?
The down one. And what's the third one? General Manager?
Sorry, the GM, the general manager's performance review, four panel and Carol's Grants.
Thank you. So congratulations, Alderman Yaxley. You're on a winning vote tonight. So now I'm calling for a motion for item thirteen, which is the nominations received for audit, the Carol's Committee and the General Managers Review Committee. So, thank you. Have Alderman King and Alderman Cockshut. Are there any discussions? Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favour, raise your hand. Sorry?
To go back. Okay, yes, sorry. Oh, jeez, I was reading, sorry.
All right. So that's carried unanimously. So now, they're all. Item eight, activities of the mayor.
I'll move.
Thank you, Alderman Cockshut and Alderman, councillor Cockshut. Any discussion?
Well, it looks like you've had a really busy month, ma'am, which is great to see. I've got no, nothing to add. This was keen, actually just to say. You met with the directors of the Glanorkey football and cricket clubs on different days. Just keen to seek to understand the outcomes of those meetings. One being on the Wednesday the tenth of July.
Wednesday the tenth of July. Ah, yes, that was a big day. The director of cricket came out to say that he basically was really looking forward to working closer with us. Making himself, introducing himself to me, basically, and general discussion on all the hopes he has. He's a very passionate president. And what was the other one? I think it is, isn't it? It's new president?
Yeah, new.
Okay. And what was the second part?
That's the cabinet.
Oh, I have cabinet, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes?
Thank you, ma'am. On the seven eighth of June, you participated in meeting with Inspector Simmons, who sadly Glanorkey was losing, who's been a great asset to the police forces, Inspector Glanorkey. Are you able to share what that meeting was about? I hope maybe that it was building some platform to, obviously, possibly I'm hoping to meet with the new inspector and move forward with the work that council and Jim have achieved together? Is that the case?
That is very much the case. Inspector Simmons said to be loving Glanorkey. He went detailed quite a few of the aspects of the relationship with the police that Glanorkey has. And he also told us that we'd be getting a new inspector, which we have. And Inspector Jason Klug has been to the council. He will be having a meeting with all of the Aldermen. And I suspect he'll be participating in when we have the roundtables and things on local community issues. He's got a very impressive record and, yeah, I think it's going to be another great partnership. We're very lucky to have those on the ground partnerships with the police. And obviously, we want to support them in the work they do. Yeah. Any other questions? No? So I'm going to put that motion, all those that have been and say, oh, raise your hands. Carried unanimously. Now we're moving on to the item nine. Glanorkey Cultural Celebration Grants. Thank you, Alderman Yaxley.
Ma'am, I'd like to propose an amendment to the recommendation.
What's your amendment?
So it's to replace recommendation four. Pardon me. And I've emailed it through to the general manager already. But it outlines, says the cultural celebrations working group to present for approval an updated application guidelines, budget allocation and name for the cultural celebrations grants programme at the next council meeting. Ma'am, the immediate recommendation is up on the, on the screen, or the proposed immediate recommendation.
Don't have a problem with that. It may hold up a couple that are desperate for this to get through. Okay, so do we need, are you moving the motion?
Yes, I'm moving.
You're moving it. So do we have a seconded? Thank you, Alderman Cockshut. Any discussion?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Just upon reading the report and the agenda, I felt, it was my opinion that the refining of the application and the guidelines and the budget and the name should come back to council for approval, rather than just being approved by the working group itself. The goal and the purpose of the grants, in my opinion, hasn't quite, based upon the report, hasn't quite hit the mark in the trial and from the report requires some, some changes. So I think it should come back to council as an overall decision. I believe the programmes obviously should continue and the grants should continue. But I think the format and the decisions around the oversight and the approval should come back, back to council to be presented and then approved above.
Okay, any other opinions? Thank you.
Can I just ask a question about the process of amendments that we've got in train as a result of? If this is passed tonight, what the suggested amendment, what the process is for putting in the suggested amendments as they appear in the agenda? Maybe if the general manager.
Through you there. So the situation is that if, so Alderman Yaxley provided us with notice that he was going to seek an amendment to the motion. But because Alderman Yaxley has moved the motion, he's able to move a different motion. So there's no, it's not, it's an amendment from, it's different to the officer recommendation in, in, in terms of point four. But it's, any Alderman is entitled to, if they're the mover of motion, then the motion seconded, that becomes the motion without, it's not actually an amendment, if you know what I mean technically. It's when, an amendment occurs when, let's say the officer recommendation is moved. And then an Alderman around the table wants to move a change to what's already been moved by a mover and seconded as the motion.
I'm hand moved for foreshadowing that one.
So I guess what I'm saying is if you can, someone can start off with a completely different motion from, if it's accepted by, you know, first person in, mover can, can move something completely different to the officer recommendation. In this case, it's, it's slightly, it's just different in terms of point four.
Cool. So for more clarity on what this process would like, look like if this motion amendment, this amendment, the motion went through, it would look like that small group going away and then would it be workshopped by the whole council? Or are you looking for those people to workshop it and then present something different back?
So, through you, ma'am. My thought, my thought process would be is if it goes back to the working group, because that's the committee that's in charge of the, the grants celebration. That was the intent behind it. And I guess it was something that when, you know, twelve months ago, we, as a council, approved it. I just thought if we're modifying it and changing names and changing forms and guidelines, it probably should come back to council. That was my, my thought process around.
Yeah.
Whether that's agreed on or not, that was just a thought.
So the community members have already had the opportunity to feed in feedback. And that's, that's informed this amendment. So I just worry that you might get the same thing back unless we involve the whole council in their workshopping of what it's going to look like next time.
Yeah.
And one of the biggest dramas is that Diwali, Diwali festival is coming up and there'll be very little time to apply for a grant. It's a significant celebration. So it has already been worked through. I'm not criticizing your amendment, but, but it will hold up. And we're already staring down August. And Diwali is October, November? End of October. So for a significant second event, second of November. So that's my only hesitation. Alderman Alderton.
So if I can evaluate, my concern for me is under top point three. There's a nomination will be sought to fill a vacancy on the cultural celebration grants working group. So if it goes back to that group for discussion and you have another person, a different concept fully out of, you could come back with a whole different process and concept at the end process. If a new member of a working group with the existing member manages to persuade you're going in a different direction, that's my concern.
Anyone else with any ideas? Thank you. Councillor King, a quick.
If we're choosing someone at the August meeting and at the August meeting the group is presenting for approval a whole bunch of things. The person who's filling the vacancy has no opportunity to do anything or be part of the process. So do we, you know, it's, it's sort of equally picky. And as you say, we need to sort it all out as they do.
Yeah, that's a very definite master. Did you want to add something? It has to be a question.
Yeah, so I, I get where you're coming from and I support the idea of stretching the decision making to the whole of council. And I know that workshops aren't necessarily a decision making, lay under decision making platform. But like, I don't think we should feel time pressure around it because we want to make sure they're right going forward. So what would I suggest to amend in a question form? Can we bring it back to the next council meeting for debate? Or the next full workshop of the council for debate or possibly?
Discussion, not debate.
Discussion. Or possibly we could amend it with what you think's missing now. Yeah, that's not a question, sorry.
Or can newly elected Deputy Mayor Yaxley expand a bit further on why he wants to amend the motion?
Yes, please, yes.
So I tried to explain my reasoning before, because it just seems from, from the report of the evaluation, from the evaluation of the report, several opportunities for improvement of the programme have been identified. Streamline the reviewing awarding process for the working group. Refine the grant criteria to clarify the programme's aims and proportional slash reporting requirements. Undertake additional marketing for the grants programme. Promote the funded grants. Consider a name change to the cultural connections grants to better reflect the aim of the programme. So for mine, there was a lot of changes going on. And this was originally a decision of council. My thought was, is that it should come back to council for any, for such a major clarification of the programme and to undertake, you know, the motion of the, of the, of the activities.
Can I ask, General Manager, this is the second time.
That's correct. So when Moon and Taste of the World Festival, when the council made a decision not to continue with Moon and Taste of the World, but to move those funds into cultural celebration grants. So the first year, last year was the first year, twenty-three, twenty-four, and it was done as a trial. The purpose of this report is really to, to say, let's, let's keep the programme running. I'm not sure whether the director has any comments about, did you have anything further to comment on?
So we'd be continuing to refine it again after this year as well, you know, because it's a very new programme. So I guess we're in a dilemma. We've got people who really desperately need this grant to go ahead.
I guess I would like to speak to it. Obviously, a working group has to come back to council anyway. The working group can still meet and do what it needs to doing. It does need these changes to be enacted. I do believe they should have enacted through the automatic endorsement of it. So I do understand where the deputy mayor is coming from with that comment. I don't think we're stopping the works of it by bringing it back next month. They can still continue to meet if they need to. We can't preempt. Who may or may not want to apply and feel that pressure for that reason. We don't know who may or may not be applying. So for those reasons, I actually am supportive of the new motion that, or the motion that is before us at the moment, for those reasons.
So can I just ask another question, General Manager? With this change, and I'm not, I'm not against it. Is this going to mean the applications will not be available until after the end of August? Because we won't have an updated application, whereas after Wednesday's meeting this month, we could be issuing applications, has been my understanding. So people could be applying for funding now for events that are going to be held on the second of October. And they can't go ahead without any confidence. You know, I'm all for good governance and the way that's worded. But I still think we have covered it in item four as well, that we'll continue to refine. The only difference here is that that updated application, which would be done by the officers anyway, is going to be delayed by over a month. Anyway, any further discussion, anyone? Okay, last chance. We'll put the motion. Do you want to speak to it again?
No, no, I just hope that it's, I'm not, I'm not trying to change it to be difficult. I'm certainly trying to change it to make sure that, you know, it's, it's done well when it's done, it's come back to the, to the, to the council itself.
All right. And would it be possible in future for Alderman to actually copy us all in if we're going to be changing things at the last minute? That'd be good. All right, I'm going to put this vote. All those in favour, raise your hand. Oh, sorry, I forgot to call it out. So just lost. I've just lost Alderman Stringer's name. Sorry, Alderman Stringer. Alderman Yaxley, councillor Kendor, and then we have Alderman Dunsby, mayor. We have councillor, Alderman King, sorry, and we have Alderman Cockshut. Those against, we have Alderman Alderton and councillor Quick. So it's carried. Now, we're moving on to item ten, which is the Business Unit Reviews Quarterly Update. And that's pretty self-explanatory for those who've done their reading. I have somebody to move this motion, please. Receive a note. Thank you, Alderman Yaxley. Do you have a seconded? Thank you, Alderman Stringer. Any discussion? Thank you, Alderman Yaxley.
Thank you, ma'am. It's a, it's a great review. It gives us a good snapshot of where we are situated on our key items that we've got responsibility for currently. Disappointed to see, obviously, with Project Hudson, the delays there and being a long way down the track and the, despite our team's outstanding work, the providers not quite delivering. I just wanted to ask a question around the Moon and Art Centre. The revenue line doesn't show a breakdown of the revenue. So my question is, is that is it possible in the future to be able to see the breakdown of what the revenue streams are? Um, so my question is, is that is it possible in future to be able to see the breakdown of what the revenue streams are? And do they have an associated budget associated with them?
Uh, yes, we can break down the revenue streams, it just takes a bit longer. Um, at the end of the day, it just sums up to.
That total, yeah.
But we, we are able to, um, go in and itemize and break that down to, that's just.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah. I just, I just hope for, for future that it'd be great to see the, the, um, the different, uh, items, uh, and they're increasing. Um, other than that, I'll, I'll leave it to the forwarders.
Okay, any further discussion? Thank you, Alderman Cockshut.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. It's, um, obviously a very detailed report and some very strong results across the board. Um, just wanted to highlight a couple of things. One's social media, so I know the team in the marketing communications, um, that's been one of their focus areas in terms of comms and reaching out to ratepayers in the community. Um, today, obviously, we had over eighty-four thousand people. We reached through Facebook, which is a twenty percent increase, um, since last quarter. Uh, Moonar Art Centre, I've obviously, um, had a, a great, um, display of functions and arts. There, twenty-one percent increase of visitation versus last quarter, over nearly nine hundred more people, which is really exciting to see that, um, come to life. Um, and obviously our childcare centres at Benjefield Park and Baradale, um, very strong, um, requirements there and increases from the last quarter and a very high wait, waitlist as well, over two hundred and nine families and two hundred and twenty-three on Baradale. Um, with high demand, so, uh, good job to all the teams involved, keep up the great work and hopefully we can get these results coming, um, moving forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion, all those in favor, carried unanimously. We now move on to item eleven, state of play report, review of regional and land use strategy. Then, uh, we have a recommendation to note the progress of the regional land use strategy review project and to receive and note the attached state of play report. Anyone like, thank you very much, Alderman Dunsby. A second please, thank you, Alderman Cockshut.
Uh, thank you, mayor. The report is self explanatory and very comprehensive. It's just an update on the, on the processes that have been put in place to date and just requires us to note that report. It's just at the state of play, so, uh, more opportunities for input and the outcome of the project review is coming later in the year, so have a look into it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other contributions? I'll put the motion, all those in favor, raise your hand. Carried unanimously. Um, we've already done item twelve, item thirteen.
Capital works.
Sorry?
Capital works.
Now moving on to item fourteen, the end of the financial year capital works status report, which is also comprehensive and the recommendation is to receive and note the end of financial year capital work status report for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. Thank you, Alderman Cockshut. Thank you, Alderman Axlley. Do you like to speak to it?
Yeah, thanks, mayor. Like, obviously lots going on in the city. Um, we've just seen the Coindra Drive, um, Drive, um, Play Space, um, get completed, I think, last week as well. So super excited to see the playground renewal process, um, keep going. Luckily, we've got Roseneath, um, going as well. I mean, obviously everyone knows about, um, all the others which we've highlighted previously. So, um, it's great to see all those projects being completed and on time and, um, it's great for the local community people to access it.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Axlley.
Thank you, ma'am, through you. Um, yeah, I concur with, um, Alderman Cockshut's, uh, response there. Yeah, certainly is excellent. See, our recurrent capitals at a hundred and three percent, I think I've noted. You know, so that's our roads, footpath, stormwater, so they're fully funded and fully completed, which is great news. Uh, the grant-funded projects of the playground renewals, um, I'm, I'm speaking of everyone, I think everyone hears constantly um, how pleasing it is, uh, the feedback is coming back from the community. Um, and it's certainly in constant use, which is really pleasing to see. My next question, it's probably a question for, and, you know, sort of just for thoughts, but it's, my question is regarding, you know, the next ten play space renewals. Um, uh, uh, do we have a, a particular plan or thought process for the next ten that's coming?
General manager?
Yeah, I want to start and then my, and the director. So, um, through you, mayor. Um, so we, we received that, um, Labour Government, uh, Federal Labour Government promise for the one point five million for ten place base upgrades and, and we've been working through that program. Um, that is obviously external funding and what we've had, um, we've also done a couple of those major, you know, in the report, it talks about Benjefield and, um, and Giblins Reserve, which was also, Giblins Reserve was obviously externally, uh, and, uh, and Benjefield was, was based, you know, based on us, uh, reallocating some, some, um, sale proceeds. Uh, so essentially, the outgoing program is go- going to rely on council self-funding or finding further, find the, finding further external funding.
Yeah.
Um, and we generally had a, a more modest, we've always had a, a rolling program of renewing play spaces, but it, uh, it, um, it's been obviously supercharged by the, by the external funding. Um, I might seek the comments, further comment from the director.
Director, you may.
Um, so just if we go back a step a little bit further than, uh, receiving the federal government grant for the ten that we've just, um, um, oh, almost finished. Uh, we also funded, uh, a number of play spaces ourselves and, um, out of forty-two play spaces in the Glenorkie municipal area, we've now upgraded nineteen of those. Uh, we've got two to go from the federal funding, so that'll take us to twenty-one. So that leaves us, we're halfway there basically. Um, so the plan going forward is we do have a list of, um, ones in priority order that need to be replaced. And so with our own funding going forward and any other grant applications that we might get, we'll, we'll continue to upgrade those play spaces year by year. Um, as the general manager noted, that we reallocated some sale proceeds with sale plan to, um, construct the Benjefield Park on the high space, um, that, there may be opportunity to do that down the track as well to build the more, um, bigger district or regional sized parks, uh, which maybe, you know, can, may be considered in places like Talosa Park going forward.
Yeah, yeah, I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further contributions? Oh, thank you, Alderman Dunsby.
Yes, thank you. Almost, it's already been said, what I would like to say, and that's, and that's fine, but just want to commend, um, the director, um, over previous councils, there was always some query when we got to this time, end of financial year and the budget was never spent. So I can see that there's been a juggling of projects and things to be, obviously that budget fully spent this year. So I'd like to commend you for achieving that and what we've achieved with the parks as well. Thank you.
Yes, and I've got to say, it's just spent up to a hundred and three percent. Well done. I'm just going to make a comment that, um, on some of the, uh, social media criticism of this council, there's often misinformation, which is really quite annoying. Um, I'm going to, for the benefit of people online, read out just, apart from all the roads and the footpaths and everything else we've done, we get criticised for not doing enough in the youth space. And I'm just going to read out what this council has achieved in the last year. So it's got the Giblins Reserve Play Space completed, Benjefield Play Space completed, Montrose Bay Skate Park completed, Glenorkie Mountain Track Bike Track redevelopment completed, the Mcot Commercial Kitchen completed, the Cabriole Oval Change Rooms Upgrade completed, upgrade interchange facilities at KG Five Oval completed, upgrade Edie Street Sports Field Lighting completed, Soccer Redevelopment under construction, Talosa Park redevelopment nearing completion. And in the playground renewal program, and I do think this is worth highlighting because it's bringing huge benefit to the younger generation of this community and to the community and mums and dads being able to mix with new people. Our playgrounds were a disgrace. Uh, many of the facilities, the monkey bar slides, et cetera, were not fit, um, for use and needed to be removed, but we have done some outstanding work under director Reali. And I'd like to congratulate him and his whole team in this particular program. So this year alone, Alroy Court Rosetta completed, Coindra Park, Merse Munna, works in progress, Roseneath Reserve, Austin's Ferry, works in progress, Chandel Strive Reserve, Baradale completed, Pitcane Street Reserve, Montrose completed, Battersby Drive, Claremont completed, Collins Vale Reserve, Collins Vale completed, Lutana Woodlands, Lutana, works in progress, Barossa Road, Glenorkie, completed, and the International Peace Park, Baradale, completed. And when you think of the size of Giblins Reserve Play Space and Benjefield Play Space and the Montrose Base Skate Park, these are a significant achievement and I think we are all immensely proud of what the council's been able to achieve. Um, councillor Kendall, did you want to say something?
Um, yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, it sounds like we're all singing praises of the council tonight, but I, I did have a shout out from the previous, um, uh, section on business units review. I just noticed that, um, the Child Safety and Planning Officer had presented to Elgat and that we'd, um, been really well received and that we've been sharing those resources with Elgat. And I went to another Elgat, um, asset management session where they also used the assets provided by Glenorkie City Council. So I just wanted to shout out that we're sharing those resources and that they're being taken up and used by Elgat and other councils. Um, I appreciate that. Uh, I wanted to say about the ridiculously large amount of playgrounds that we've delivered in the last six months as well. And, um, the two sections of, we've got the renewals, um, and also the grant funded, um, graph there. Can you help me understand with the renewals, how we had that big dip and then we've caught up to over a hundred percent? But there was that big slowdown and then catch up?
Thank you, Alderman, uh, director of Reali. You nearly had a promotion.
Emotion, bit.
Yeah.
The, the graph is a reflection of how, um, the, um, spending was, uh, predicted by offices. So there's, uh, probably been a, um, a forecast, uh, put forward by the officers on how they thought the projects would run, but, um, when you actually roll them out in practice on the ground, you strike all sorts of delays. We use, um, our infrastructure management group also to, um, work the program through the year. And by that I mean that if we have a delay or a project that can't go ahead because of, um, whatever issue might arise, uh, we look at what can we substitute, um, not bringing forward a project that's probably going to get done the year after, we can just bring that forward. So there's a bit of that that happens towards the end of the year when we can see that we may not be getting there. So we look at what else we can substitute. So it's quite an active process, which is ongoing all through the year.
Thanks. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I have a question. I, I, a question I'd actually put to, um, the deputy general manager and the, and the director Amelia, in regards to, yes, we've done a fantastic job in creating and building new play spaces. But the one thing I haven't seen, and I, the question I'm going to ask is, has council got an appetite for this? We've built a significant, fantastic play space in Benjefield Play Space in Moona. We've done equally similar at Giblins Reserve. But you have a large number of your ratepayers and community members living in the northern suburbs. And while I applaud you for a number of small parks you've upgraded and you plan to upgrade, just wondering why there hasn't been an appetite for a significant play space in the northern suburbs where you have so many children? You know, probably Austin's Ferry is one of your fastest growing areas in, in, in relation to new homes, young families, young kids. We're putting in some smaller play spaces, but I don't see any interest with council having a look and embracing, you know, a, a really large Benjefield type play space in the northern suburbs. Just wondering what the take and the thoughts are on that from an operational point of view.
And so Alderman Alderton, could I suggest you also have a look, because it's before your time, so you wouldn't have seen it, our play space strategy, which is an excellent read, and I'll pass over to Alderman Reali through, uh, director Reali, whose job it has been to implement that and here it can explain the regional significance.
Thank you, mayor. Um, we do have different levels of play spaces, being, uh, regional, district, local. Um, and I think part of the strategy has been to, um, cater for the, um, higher population centers, um, to start with. There's probably no reason why we couldn't visit, um, um, an additional play space at a regional level or district level in other areas. And it's probably something that would be discussed at, at a council, uh, budget session where we do some more infrastructure planning into the future.
Happy with that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, then I'm going to put that motion. All those in favor? It's carried unanimously. Okay. And now, item fifteen, the code of conduct and dispute resolution amendments. Do I have a move for this? Thank you very much, councillor Quick. Do I have a second, sir? Thank you very much, Alderman King. Any discussion, councillor Quick?
It really worries me that we are becoming very prescriptive in how we deal with each other. Uh, this council, I can't remember any for the last, you know, two or three years at least, where we've had name-calling, uh, posts on social media giving each other a hard time. And to, to me, if you look at what's happening in the Hobart City Council, there are code of conduct, you know, you, you breathe the wrong way and someone has a code of conduct and you have to go through this labyrinth of justification. And then if you're not happy with that, you go to another higher level of, of dispute resolution. Uh, I think in our submission to the government, uh, we should highlight the civility and the respect that we have for each other and our opinions and base it on the assumption that we're here for the betterment of our ratepayers, not for the self-aggrandizement of each other. Uh, and, you know, it really worries me that this is happening. I mean, why?
I think, I think it reflects, um, like just the situation we've got in Glenorkie, where a very small percentage of youth that falls into big trouble. Small percentage of council, um, councillors are giving the sector a bad name. So it's about cleaning up our act. Thank you, general manager.
Um, through you, ma'am. Yes, I think it's a, if you take a statewide perspective, you don't have to look very far. And there are a number of councils that have significant, um, significant behavioural issues and cultural issues to address around the council table. Um, it is true that, um, I think that, that this council has been, um, you know, running very smoothly, very respectful council meetings, um, and it's fantastic. I mean, it means as a council, we get things done, you know, and that's fantastic. But, uh, it's fair to say that this is, this is, you know, been done by the government to address a statewide, an overall statewide problem. Um, and it, it's also fair to say that, um, uh, a couple of the things that it is doing, uh, are beneficial in, 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 in terms of what you were saying, that they are trying to bring in a, uh, the idea is to bring in a conflict resolution policy, which tries to deal with things earlier before they get blown into a full-blown code of conduct process. So that is, that is a positive thing. That's something that the Local Government Association Tasmania is working on at the moment. And I believe they're not far away from circulating a draft to councils for.
I, I just think we're creating another bureaucracy and, uh, this adversarial, uh, resolution when we should, like we've done tonight, elect a deputy mayor. And, and it's, you know, people put forward their opinions, we have a vote and everyone goes away happy. And congratulate everybody who's at least put the hand up.
Thank you. And Alderman Axlley wants to say something?
Yeah, just something very brief, um, but I guess backing on to what was previously talked about in terms of, I think our statement of a tender legacy statement really does, has helped us as a council, um, moving forward. And it's been a really positive thing back at the start of our term. Um, and that was something that's helped, you know, set the, set the ground rules and the rules. And we've all been respectful of that and it's been great to see. So, you know, for us, we probably don't necessarily have it, but it's al- it's also. So, you know, for us, we probably don't necessarily have it, but it's all, it's also, we cannot predict what happens in the future. So that having, having something like this, I think in terms of having an internal dispute resolution is much better than having a code of conduct and how it's all working at the moment. Um, but I obviously look forward to the, being able to provide some more input into the future for the next steps. It'll be great.
Yes. Um, any other comments? Thank you, Alderman.
I'd just like to add, Mayor, I'll be supporting this motion tonight because it can just bring some consistency across the code of conduct process. It brings some consistency in a resolution process that can eventually avoid things progressing to a code of conduct process.
Thank you. Um, so I'll put that motion, oh, sorry. Please go ahead, councillor Kendall.
Thank you. So, um, what was I going to say? So I absolutely support amendments to the code of conduct and I can see what they're trying to do here and why it's necessary across, um, councils. And the only thing that bugs me about the language in this is I hate passive language and there's a, there's a comment, some of them are very vague and ambiguous, the way that it's, um, framed. And the one that stuck in my, little thought in my side was, um, that causes the victimisation of another person. So that's something that we don't want to see councillors do, but who the perpetrator is in that situation is kind of ambiguous. Does it mean inciting followers to victimise someone or, um, yeah, so just the vagueness of the language kind of bugs me a little bit. And I worry slightly about the fact that we haven't seen that draft for the dispute resolution process and what that's going to look like. I worry in a cost-shifting way because the reason, it's a very important reason that this is coming forward because code of conduct has been weaponised and used to target people and that's cost the ratepayer a lot of money. But I worry that by putting that, so it will now be in the council's hands and council decision-making to make the call of when something goes to an external facilitator or mediator. So, um, yeah, that kind of, there's an inbuilt disincentive to externalise, to, like, bringing contractors for dispute resolution because the cost has been shift to us, shifted to us. So that's my, um, concerns and I, I guess I would have probably appreciated a bit more bouncing off other people about what they thought about our submission. But yeah, I support the code of conduct being tightened and I, I get the fix that Elgat is in because they have to provide just enough information to get a yes, no from councils and not too much information so that it gets bogged down in the weeds and never progresses. So I see the way they've done it, but I would have liked to see more detail.
Good point. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, I was just going to say, from memory, um, we had pretty, um, a pretty narrow timeframe to do this. Um, we received this letter on the, well, the date of the sixteenth of, sixteenth of July. So we were under a really tight timeframe to bring it, bring it to council. In terms of the, um, alternative dispute resolution, they've kind of had, had something there, uh, in the past, but it hasn't really been so formalised. So the, what, what is proposed with that is to actually have, um, have a Legat, um, organised panel, panel of alternative dispute resolution practitioners, which I'm presuming council would have to pay for them, but there would be a statewide procurement process to arrange for, for practitioners that councils could then use to, to, um, to, to do that alternative dispute resolution, try and nip things in the bud rather than, um, send them out into the code of conduct process. So it just provides more opportunities for dispute resolution earlier.
Thank you. So there have been no further contributions. I'm going to put that motion, all those in favour. Again, uh, Alderman King?
Sorry.
Carried unanimously. Item sixteen, quarterly report, quarter four, period ending thirtieth of June, two thousand and twenty-four. The recommendation is to receive a note, the council's quarterly report and quarterly annual plan progress reports for the quarter ending thirtieth of June, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you, Alderman Dunspie and councillor Kendall. Alderman Dunspie.
Thank you. Um, I found the policies are comprehensive and it's always a such a read for anybody who's the public, they want to go through this, without anybody was so inclined to see what the council's doing and their focus around those particular headings. So I don't have any questions myself, so I can look forward.
Thank you. Any discussion? No. Again, good work to the officers and thank you. I'll put that motion, all those in favour. Carried unanimously. Um, item seventeen is notices of motion, questions or notice with, without notice, without notice. Are they ready? Councillor Ki, uh, councillor Quick, so I don't want to get too.
A question without notice, seeing that the Clarence municipality are thinking of have introducing some restrictions on the ownership of cats. I'd hate to think that the five Greater Hobart councils are all going to reinvent the wheel. I'd like to see, I hate the word working party, but some collaboration between the five councils. So if something is introduced, cats don't recognise council boundaries. The devastation they cause with our native wildlife and native animals really, really worries me. And I'd like to see that, you know, the start of the Greater Hobart, uh, drop, you know, but Canberra have put it in place and it works very effectively. Uh, you know, they've got the ideal sort of, you know, boundaries, but if you have a look at the wonderful things they've done by introducing mandatory, uh, sort of cat runs and those sorts of things, uh, you know, with, with the five mayors or general managers or staff working together, I mean, we, we've done it with dogs and in my mind, that's the easy bit. The hardest bit is our feral cats. So, you know, that's my question without notice.
Thank you. That's a good one. Do you want to say anything, General Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, um, through you. The, so was it a, a number of fellow members, um, attended the Ten Lives, the opening of the Ten Lives, um, um, opportunity shop in where Dickinson's newsagents used to be on the corner of Main Road and Hopkins Street, uh, last week? Um, I'm pleased to say that council as part of the budget process, uh, is making a, a funding contribution to Ten Lives and that's in recognition of the, the work that they are doing in terms of responsible cat ownership. Uh, and not, not only are they, um, an organisation that, um, uh, that, uh, works with cat lovers, but they also recognise the, the damage, the, the effective predatory behaviour of cats. And so they are working on the other side of that too, to try and manage the, uh, manage those, those impacts on our native fauna.
Thank you. So that'd be discussed by the ERT.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, you're welcome. Okay, Alderman King.
Just to add to that, are we doing anything about rabbits? And we talk about cats and fomin rabbits are everywhere at the moment. You can't, sorry about tripping over one. Getting away from that.
Right wall, whatever it is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we, do we do anything?
Through, through you. Now, we had a recent public, um, inquiry in relation to that issue and we had, um, uh, an inquiry about the potential for the use of ferrets to deal with the issue in, on the Veridale Reserve. Uh, I believe there was previously some ferreting done in past years on Veridale Reserve. Uh, and, uh, that, uh, council doesn't propose to, um, continue that practice. Um, I understand that, um, the calici virus is, um, I think we're having trouble, uh, trouble sourcing calici virus as a state, from memory.
Really? Uh, the N R E were actually, um, human with the rabbit, uh, population outbreak. Um, and they were waiting on, um, they need a, a few consecutive good days to, for the calici virus to be spread to control the population. Um, the inquiry was that they're actually having trouble in outsourcing the calici virus to introduce, uh, because I think it's, um, spread from one to another via, um, studios. That's why they need some good weather to make sure transfers to reduce the population.
For the benefit of our audience, could you just elaborate on N R E?
Sorry, uh, it's the, the old Environment Protection Authority, so Natural Resources and Environment Department. They, they look after the, um, um, our outbreaks of introduced species.
Thank you. Any further, oh, yes, please, Alderman Cox.
I just have a question without notice. Um, my favourite topic of the day, it seems, um, the basketball courts for the Jackjumpers High Performance Centre. Where are we at with the, I know with the state growth and there was communication with the council on potential sites within the municipality. Do we have a latest update of where we're at?
We have a second letter from, um, Minister Street confirming we're definitely getting the four courts and there has been high-level discussions and I believe it might be down to two. It is down to two.
Um, yeah, through you, Mayor, the, sorry, through you, Mayor. Sorry, I apologise for that. Um, the, the, um, the, there is a, yeah, there's a working group process happening between, um, uh, between council and state government, uh, agencies, as in infrastructure Tasmania. And, um, there is a, there's a report that's canvassed a number of sites, I can't remember, extensive number of sites. Uh, and, uh, they're down, they are certainly down to a, a small shortlist. Um, there is a preferred, there is a preferred option based on the analysis, but that, uh, needs to go to the minister for consideration.
And do we have a timeframe of when it'll go to planning or when we'll get troubles in the ground, given the, I don't know, it's on the council's fault, but a lot of lengthy delays, given it was a two thousand and eighteen election commitment?
Through you, Mayor, we don't have a timeframe at this stage, but, uh, it's something we'll be seeking from, uh, from the state government.
Yeah, no, thank you. Like I said, I've been reached out to a lot of community basketball and netball associations and then they're obviously quite frustrated with the lack of, you know, facilities and promises here and promises there, and it seems to be just kicked down the road. So I think, um, as a council, we need to do our bit and hold everyone accountable, whether it's the federal or state government, to make sure we're getting things going.
Yes, and the General Manager and I had a discussion about this morning. Once the decision is made, we will be pushing as hard as possible to get something started this year.
I think one of the problems is how much money's going to be left over after the Jackjumpers get their share and their share.
I think that's been asked, I think that's correct.
My understanding is that, um, it's been made clear that there's a, uh, that there's a, there's a, a cut-up between, uh, what was going to be community courts and what was going to be the high performance.
And the gymnastics.
And, and the gymnastics.
Which has gone right.
Yes.
Because it's been very much. Okay, Alderman, Alderman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm probably going to ask a series of questions and I'll sort of lead into it where I'm coming from with those questions. So tonight, we've heard from a, a ratepayer that's had a phenomenal rate increase of fourteen hundred plus dollars through no fault of this council, through revaluation with the revaluation, uh, Value General's Office with the revaluation. Um, I've heard lots of stories in the community. We've all received lots of emails. And earlier in the year, we had a budget briefing process through the workshops where we were told if we imposed on the community a five point nine, five percent rate increase, that we needed to do that to achieve a, a rate base, to achieve all the wonderful things we do in Glenorkie. So the first question I'm actually going to ask is, with this extra cost and revaluation that's occurred across a lot of properties on, in, in Glenorkie, and I know some have come out winners and some have come out losers and some have come out terrible losers, what has that revaluation actually done to the revenue amount that we are now receiving from our rates collection? Are we now receiving more rates? Uh, is what we're going to collect this year be far greater than the, I think it was forty-nine million dollars, maybe from memory, correct me if I'm wrong, that we were going to receive as rates revenue by, in, in, in increasing rates by five point nine five percent? Has the revaluation given us a boost in, 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 in money? Are we now a couple of million dollars more in the, in the kitty or are we not the same amount of money?
Please pass to the General Manager.
Through you, Mayor, so the, I'm sorry.
I'm not taking that.
I'm going to sort of talk to you later. Um, the, yeah, so, so the situation is that the, um, the, the twenty, the twenty-four, twenty-five rates budget, uh, as, or rates as part of the budget was set, um, it was certainly late in the, late in the last financial year that we received the Value General's information, later than we would have hoped. But that was certainly fully factored into the council's rates decision for twenty-four, twenty-five. So what that means is that, is correct to say that we, we are budgeting a five point nine five percent, um, uh, increase in general rate revenue overall.
Yeah.
For the city. So the numbers, the numbers that went to the budget process are accurate. The, the issue, um, as I think we flagged, uh, we only got this, as I say, late in the piece, but we, 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 we know, um, from past experience that we, you know, um, in between revaluations, it's quite steady as she goes. You know, we went one year where there's no adjustment factor, the AAV stays the same. We then have a, the next year, we have an adjustment factor, the AAV goes up by a consistent percentage across all the properties in the city. So it doesn't affect the, the, the relativities between the different properties. Everyone gets the same, uh, number. So if we increase rates by five percent, then everyone gets a five percent rate increase.
And, and, and look, I get and understand that, but I get my, I guess my question was, through the, through the decisions made through the Value General's Office, because we did a lot of this budget workshop stuff before council knew.
Yeah.
How much or, or how high some of these revaluations are going to be. So we, we didn't have a crystal ball, correct? So we, we didn't, we didn't really know in retrospect how much the impact was going to be on some ratepayers.
Well, we certainly provided information. We did some, we did modelling, uh, we've got the, we've got the manager finance here and the director, um, who can provide a bit more detail on this, but my recollection of the process is that we did provide, uh, information to council about the, the fact that we would have significant, um, uh, increases, uh, over and above the five point nine five percent to some individuals based on changes in the evaluation. And that we would have some, so effectively we said there would be some winners and losers. And we, I think, provided some examples of, uh, and some rough percentages about what, what that might look like.
Yeah. I get and understand that. Yeah. I guess, I guess the point I'm leading to is, have we actually recouped through this revaluation more money than we estimated we were going to recoup?
No.
In the forty-nine thousand dollars.
That was the original answer to my question, that, that we budgeted for a five point nine five percent general rate revenue increase. So that, that general rate revenue increase is saying, what does our bucket of rates look like as a total? Uh, and then a five point nine five percent increase in that bucket overall for the city. And that's what we are getting out of this. And, and you are correct that, um, there are some winners and losers out of that process because of the way that the, different people's AAV has resulted in the result of the valuation. As I said, I think earlier in the, in the response to, to the gentleman earlier in the meeting, our, um, uh, our rate, our rate, uh, cent in the dollar has actually decreased from, uh, seven point something cents in the dollar to six point something cents in the dollar. Um, so we've actually dropped our overall cent in the dollar rate to, to partly, uh, reflect the fact that there's been this, this bigger, um, AAV number. Um, but it's, this is, this is a problem with this, well, a problem, problem in terms of communication of the, every revaluation process that, that council, we can go between the revaluations for those six years, um, and, and we're, we're communicating something where all the, all the relativities between the different, um, properties remain the same for a six-year period. And then every, well, every, every sixth year, let's say, um, they, they, they all move around and then people, we say, well, we're raising rates by a particular percentage, uh, and they look at their bills and so. And then people, we say, well, we're raising rates by a particular percentage. And they look at their bills and say, well, well, some of them say, well, my, 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 my bill increase is, is higher than that and, and they are upset. And then other people look at their bill increase saying, well, that's lower than what they said. And they just keep shrooming about it. But, but that's the problem that we've got. It's very difficult to, to communicate. But, but no, we're not, we're not, the short answer to your question is, no, there is no banter for council out of doing this. We, we get the same, we collect the same, we budgeted for a, the way we work is that we, we work out how much it costs to run the council over the next year. We work out how much different sources of revenue require. So planning fees, dog fees, that sort of stuff. And then we work out, okay, how much rate revenue do we need to run the, run the council for next year? And then we, we set our rates accordingly. And so, yeah, so that we're not getting any, so we set the rates knowing what the, what the overall A A V for this, we do it, basically do it on what is the overall A A V total for the whole city. And, and we say, okay, what do we need to multiply by the total A A V to get the five point nine five general rate increase that we need to run the council for the next year?
Right. So thank you for explaining that in a lot more detail, General Manager. Also, not for me, but for those watching on social media and those that may be listening from other platforms, because I have been asked this question numerous times, whether council have been given a considerable windfall. And I've even had rate payers ask me if there was a potential for council. If you do have some extra money that is outside of, more money than what you need to, to budget the, the council coffers with, why couldn't council say, implement something like a rebate back to those hardest hit of, you know, whatever, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, whatever we can afford, back out of our surplus, which obviously we don't, absolutely can't do that now, along the lines we did when we had the COVID rebate. But that, that question was asked of me. So thank you for clearing that up, that we haven't obtained an additional windfall. And really, the revaluation has had some winners in the community, some losers in the community. But council's still come out with the same net result of money it's required to run the council on a yearly basis. So I thank you for clarifying that. Tony?
And for members of our online community, council, seven workshops, wasn't it? There's a significant amount of workshops trying to make sure we are making the right decision. I'm very conscious of the impact that, you know, in a cost of living crisis this might have. So now I need, oh, sorry, do I, anyone else want to make?
I'm moved to go to closed council.
Thank you very much. So we've got Alderman King. Can I have a second, or Alderman Yaxley? Move the, we're moving to the closed part of the council. We thank you for your attention. Oh, sorry.
Don't be idiots.
Moving to the light, good night. Thank you. Put it to the light, please. And that's unanimous. Thank you. And that brings the open part of our council meeting to a close. We thank you for listening and contributing and coming here in person for those people who did. Thank you. Good night.